We'll call the work session to order. Rule call, please.
Here.
Dempsey? Here.
Hornier. Hornier, here.
Prop? Here.
McGarrettie?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Your.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting that we invite the public to participate. If you would like to address the commission at this time, we invite you to come up to the front, since the microphone's in use, and give us your full name, your residential address, and abide by our three-minute rule. If anyone would like to address the commission, come on up. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to city business, to the downtown dumpster presentation. Mr. Shipman?
After you remember, it was two meetings ago, we had an issue on the agenda that had impact on downtown dumpsters. So Mike and Dave from Partners in Architecture were here, and they offered to take a look at it, said they'd done some work on this in the past, and they would put together a plan that could kind of encompass all the businesses in a way that everybody could utilize dumpsters or have a means for trash pickup. So I have that presentation ready to go, so I will turn it over to you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's cool, yeah. All right, this is so exciting that we're here to talk about dumpsters. I'm just kidding, but we are very excited to present again. So thank you for the opportunity. David and I and a few of our staff members spent several hours analyzing the downtown, and we have a brief agenda. We're gonna, we're gonna kind of give you an overview of our analysis, so it's probably the third page in, these, these maps. We have, we have two maps of the downtown area, and we've kind of focused on the central core, I would, I guess I'm gonna call it, where all the, most of the activity is, and which is this slide here. We've, we went through, I don't know, I don't know how many businesses we have listed there, 80-some businesses. We probably talked to half of these people, door-to-door, kind of walking through, trying to understand their needs from a trash refuse, I guess, dilemma, or how they handle their, their trash on a daily basis or weekly basis. And we got a myriad of feedback, a lot, a lot of red flags, like, "Yeah, we need something," or, "Yeah, I don't need anything, I don't really care, I just take it home," or whatever. So we're gonna kind of share what we found, and some of this preliminary information we shared with Greg and Brian and the DPW guy, I'm sorry.
Jeff.
Jeff, yeah, I'm so sorry. And we had really, really good conversation a few weeks back. So we kind of broke this central core into, I guess, quad, not quadrants, but areas. We labeled each of the public parking lots, A through E. A being the large lot behind Emerald Theater. C is where the Anton Art Center is. B is the Rosacop, I believe, and D is New Street, right?
Yes.
Or, that's not New Street, that's Market Street. Yeah, you're right. B is New Street, and E is on the other side of Grashit. Yeah. You're right. D is Market, yeah. So we also kind of highlighted the, the south end of the downtown, and our intention was to go to these businesses, too. We really didn't get there, and I think their needs are a little bit different than the central core, because most of these properties have property where they can actually have their own dumpster and have a compliant situation. So we kind of foregone that for the moment, and we can always circle back to those individuals. Not that they're not important, but they're really not contributing to the situation in the downtown area. So these, these five items, there's actually six here, one of them I'm missing. These are the, the items that we've, we discovered, so how people are handling, handling their trash. Item A, dumpsters are located on, on private property for single business use. So there's, there's several companies that have enough property, they have their own dumpster, and they, they deal with it. Some of the restaurants, some of the private businesses, they handle it just fine. Item B, neighboring businesses sharing a dumpster. So that's like, our, actually, our current situation, we share with the church next to us, Zion Church, we pay them a fee, we use their dumpster, everybody's happy. Item C, dumpsters located on public property and designated and non-designated areas. So this is where, you know, we, you, the city has constructed dumpster enclosures in two locations, one of them in the new lot, and one of them behind Emerald Theater there. You co-locate dumpsters that are owned or contracted by others. You provide the space, they put a dumpster there, and that's fine. There's other locations where, "Hey, I have a business here, I'm just gonna plop a dumpster over here in a public lot." Great. Nobody complains, nobody says anything, I guess it's okay. Item D, businesses placing refuse in private trash cans or dumpsters on a public sidewalk. So we had public sidewalk up and down Cherry Street, a lot of dumpsters, they're gone, thank you, they're not there currently. Along Main Street, there's actually trash cans on the sidewalk that I find, or found that businesses are putting their trash there, sits there, and I guess they, it gets picked up a couple times a week. There's also public trash cans along Main Street, and maybe some of the other streets that businesses put their trash in your public trash can, which was interesting. And item E, some businesses have no access to dumpsters, and they actually take their trash home every night, which I guess is okay, too. So there's really six different situations. We surveyed pretty much all the dumpsters in the downtown area, so this is Lot A or behind Emerald, that's, that's the big dumpster enclosure there, and you'll notice all of these dumpsters are outside of the enclosure, or they're angled, so they're, they're, they really don't fit in the enclosure. And why, why do they do that? Well, for access, for the trucks to, to get them back up, pull, dump, and stick it back in. The way this, this enclosure was laid out, there's really not enough clearance to do it as, as a head end, you know, in and out, kind of like what you just built in the new lot there. So this is not a good situation, it's something, you have something there, but it'd be nice if there was gates and all those could be kind of hidden. Lot B, that's your new lot there, before you finish the gate, very nice enclosure, it's set back from the street, seems like it's easily accessed. We haven't really witnessed trucks coming in and out of there, but I don't think they're gonna have any issue coming in and out and keeping that, that thing clean. Obviously, all the dumpsters that were temporarily along New Street there, those are gonna be gone at some point. The, the lot right next to Anton Art Center, this is very interesting dumpster enclosure, extremely high. Unfortunately, it's up on the sidewalk or raised pedestal, so you can't really get to it. It's kind of funny, and it's unfortunate. So they put the dumpster in the space next to it, which I guess that's okay, but it's not very safely. And, you know, just a couple trash cans along. Item D there, Lot D, that's the Market Street lot, that's behind Three Blind Mice, and that's a dumpster for that business, and okay, it's fine, but it's not in an enclosure, and it was just there. I guess the guy told me, "Yeah, they always had it there, so I just leave it there." Okay. So, you know. And then this is across Grashit, so southbound Grashit, there's a few businesses there, and most are, a couple of those that we talked to, they, they just have trash cans, they pull them out once a week and they get picked up, and that dumpster, I'm not sure who that belongs to, but probably the church or the SPS Vision, I think, just out in the parking lot, you gotta kind of drive around it. Couple other private lots, this is Down Cherry, I think that's by the new Hungry Howies there, that will be opening soon, hopefully. I don't know who uses that one, but that's private dumpster and private lot, it's picked up, and then there's a picture of the dumpsters on the sidewalk, the new sidewalk that are now, now gone. Another private lot, St. Peter's Church. Yeah, yeah, they, yeah. Greg was kind enough to, you know, we kind of sent him this picture, like, "Hey, what's going on?" And he got on somebody, and they were gone.
They're privately fire, it's our own people that put them there. From the project, for some reason, they thought that was a good idea.
Yeah.
They had to move them.
15 minutes, or 10 minutes.
Yeah. As soon as he told me, I'm like, "I told him to come and take them to the DPW yard." Jacob was like, "I kind of told him to put them there." I'm like, "Okay."
Yeah, that was a quick action, so thank you for that. St. Peter's Church, this is probably the most compliant dumpster enclosure, I'd say, in the city, at least in this area. Very well kept, clean, gates in great shape, so, you know, that's what we like to see. Here's a couple others, all right off of McComb Place, and, you know, that's, I think, by O'Halloran's there, they have their own dumpster, and Grease Interceptor as well. So there's quite an assortment, you know, these are over by Buffalo Wild Wings and the, the gas station there. Some are enclosed, some are not, but at least they're attempting to, to comply. This is over by the old Damons, I believe, there, yeah. So anyways, we tried to get, oh, here's the, here's the trash cans on Main Street, so the one on the left is, I guess that's a private trash can that gets picked up, and then the one on the right there is kind of the public trash can. So both of those are used to dispose of business trash. From what I understand, from talking to the business right next door, that's, all the food goes in there, it's really stinky and nasty, and I never even really noticed it until they pointed it out to me, to be honest with you. And I frequent there and, you know, get lunch carry out, but anyways, it's not ideal, right on Main Street.
I haven't noticed it, but they can't do that, so we can absolutely stop that.
Yeah. So, you know, we have an assortment of challenges, and we're just gathering the info, and that's kind of the, the background of the analysis, and I'll let David jump into this.
So that's an interesting point, actually, like Mike said, and Greg as well. Sometimes things are so, every day you don't notice that they're there and not compliant. And a lot of the examples that we shared are, not because that's what we picked on, but just about across the board, things aren't compliant. Maybe in the beginning, a lot were intended to be, but just overused, like the practicality of getting in and out of that corral at Emerald is difficult. So, you know, so they kind of do it the way they have to, just to get in and out of there. So I wanted to address just a couple highlights, just like a snippet of your ordinance. Currently, you require all commercial properties in the CBD and elsewhere in the city, too, to handle their own waste. So that's a requirement currently, so, and from those examples, they're doing it to some extent. The purpose is to be satisfactory, that, that's not really necessarily the case, in the method in which they're collecting and disposing. And then also, property owners shall be responsible for the paying of the cost of doing it. In some cases, that's happening, in some cases, maybe it's, you know, a little bit of the city, a little bit of the property owner, which is probably a good direction to go, seeing it's a bigger issue than just an individual business, at least that's the way we're looking at it. And then, location, receptacle shall be placed only on properly designated and authorized areas with proper receptacle. So that's kind of a snippet or, you know, a high-level look at your ordinance. And then, a couple pages later, the bullet points there, here's the real thing, is this is what you have to do. You need to minimize the negative impacts on persons, neighboring properties and traffic flow, being out of the right-of-way, not crossing over a sidewalk necessarily. Be placed on a concrete pad, that's for maintenance and longevity. Be screened from view, which is kind of a purpose in general that we're kind of aiming at, is improving and enhancing the downtown experience. Not be placed in the front yard. That's just such a negative deterrent, it kind of speaks for itself. You want it to be out of sight, side yard, preferably rear yard, and be maintained in a good visual order. So that's kind of your ordinance requirements as it stands right now, and kind of like I started, you know, some things have just become everyday and normal that you don't really kind of notice it until it's brought to your attention, and hopefully we're highlighting it in a way that we're trying to be positive versus like, "Oh, this is all bad." What we're trying to say is, here's a new point which we can kind of turn the page with what you're doing downtown right now. It's a good launching point. Here's a couple examples of how, how to deal with it safely, and that's really important. Picking up and emptying refuse containers can be really dangerous or unsafe, so we want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that's not good just to get the trash out of here, but not gonna cause another residual problem with traffic or pedestrians. Couple examples of proper circulation, clearances, criteria, whether it be on-the-ground area or volume, you know, what's above you, which could be communication lines or power lines. We want to make sure that those things are looked at as well. Kind of research examples. Mike's gonna go over a couple programs, and then I'm gonna come back and talk about some ordinance items within the programs.
Thanks, David. So we, we did a little research on neighboring communities or communities that might have a downtown. This is the Charter Township of Northville, it's actually the City of Northville, I apologize for that typo there. They had a pretty interesting approach, and their ordinance states that if you have a downtown business, you will use one of their strategically-located dumpster enclosures, or their dumpsters. So they have five locations throughout the downtown, and you choose which one you want to use, and that's what you use. When you have a business, you'll get, you'll get assessed a fee, a bimonthly fee, like if you're a restaurant, you're paying $500 every other month for dumpster use. If you're a small professional office, it's $55. And, and I'm not sure how they establish those rates, but I'm assuming it's with research and some data, or at least, you know, they flush through this. They didn't just start this, it's been ongoing for a while. Yeah, and, and I guess you have an option to opt-out if you have an ability on your property to have a ordinance-compliant structure or enclosure, you can do your own. Otherwise, you're, you're signing up for their deal. That's the way it is in downtown Northville. Another one similar is City of Ferndale. They actually have four trash compactors in their downtown area, and if you have a downtown business, you are to use their trash compactor. You're assessed a sanitation fee, and I did speak with, they have actually a sanitation officer who runs all this. And I should say, take a step back, it's actually run or spearheaded by the DDA, and I think the DDA must fund this, and then the DDA gets with the city clerk, and they establish your fee for your business type when you come to town. So it's like, "Oh, you're a restaurant, okay, let's meet with the clerk, we're gonna establish your fee, here's your fee, and here's your key to the trash compactor, you use that." You can't put large bulky items in there, but your daily trash is how it's used. Seems like a pretty good program. You know, the DDA's involved and the city, but the DPW actually administers and supervises it and assesses fees or whatever. And these sanitation fees, they're, they're kind of added to your tax roll, so it's, it's right on your tax bill, you don't have to chase them down for payment. So that was kind of interesting. Downtown Plymouth, so City of Plymouth, they, they have, I think, a single waste hauler for the downtown. You use one of their carts, they have 95-gallon carts or 65-gallon carts, and you use those. If you need something more than that, then you have to make alternative accommodations. But these two, we thought stood out from all the ones we've, we've researched. A lot of them don't really have a, a program, and I think Brian had sent us a link to Hamtramck. I think they're, they're in a process of evaluating their situation down there, too, so it's kind of a hot topic, I guess.
So those are two programs we thought were interesting, but to underline that with the, the ordinance requirements, we indicated four here on the next slide, but include Plymouth, as Mike mentioned, so there's five. And I'm not gonna go through each of them specifically, but the things that they all had pretty much in common is not putting whatever it is in the front yard, just to keep it out of sight, and screen it from the street. So preferably, again, in the backyard, which your ordinance does address. And most ordinance kind of cover this in some way or another. Minimum negative impacts to neighboring properties, traffic circulation, and the right-of-way in the road. So those are, were main things across the board. The one other thing I'd indicate, which is in New Baltimore, that is a little different, but I think good, not only is the refuse container to be screened, but the screening itself needs to be screened by landscape, so you can kind of see that in there, it's underlined there, and the second tick from the bottom there shall be complemented with evergreen plantings. So I think there's a little bit of variation, but for the most part, each community saying, "Hey, this is a needed thing, we, we want it accessible, but we want it kind of out of sight, so we can enhance the downtown experience." Each of these have a little bit of a downtown, not quite Mount Clemens, we didn't kind of go across the board and do all the samplings of cities and townships. We tried to pick something that have what we'd call a downtown Main Street to get, kind of give you a good example.
So we understand this is like a work session, so, you know, we're gonna throw out some ideas or recommendations, and we're hoping we can get some dialogue and discussion. You know, we don't have everything solved, but we have some ideas, and we have some good research that we've completed. So the first item that we're recommending is to build upon the excitement that you've created with this downtown revitalization project. The city spent significant funds on McComb Place and Cherry Street and redoing everything, so let's take that excitement and let's build upon it. Let's, let's say this is a, a point in time where we're, we're making a drastic change with how we handle our downtown, how we treat the downtown, how it feels. This is your mission statement right here, the intent is to make the downtown area more accessible, traversable, and pleasant to spend time in. It's not pleasant to walk next to a nasty, stinky dumpster or a trash container on the sidewalk. Like, let's really make this a priority. You know, I think there's, there's tremendous potential for the downtown area, and this is really a, a springboard. So we're really, we're really wanting to build upon this, this great endeavor that you've undertaken.
Just all of us recognizing that trash as a, can be, have a negative impact or a non-impact, and we're shooting for the non-impact. And as Mike kind of alluded to, what we're looking at is preserving what you have going, and maybe even going a step further, enhancing what you have going. Our vision when we bought the building 15 or so years ago was to draw the, what was happening down at McComb Place in the beginning of Cherry Street, all the way down to our building. That's really always what we thought, and that's kind of indicated a little bit here. And the opportunity that we see, you know, in terms of what could this spur on that you're doing now is the, those two parking lots or two areas that are unbuilt, the parking lot with the church apartments, could be an ideal, kind of a Cherry Street development. I mean, part of your development was to increase the width of the sidewalk on the east side, which ideally it's for pedestrian or outdoor something. So we think the outdoor something is gonna happen on the other side of the street in that parking lot, and you can see some pickleball courts shown there. And the next slide, we're sharing with you a vision we have for our building. We're a growing company, we started with only occupying the first floor, or the second floor, now we fully occupy the building and we're out of space. Obviously, we don't want to move, we love our building, we love where we are, so we're looking at how do we grow our space and stay where we are? This was one thing, and you, we voiced the last time we were together, "We don't want that in our front door." Now you can see how much more of an impact it could be if this comes to pass, so. Yeah, this is, this is a plan where we add on some group space within our building so we could utilize the group space we have now for personnel, because we're kind of a...
Good problem to have.
It's a, it's a good problem to have, and so you have it, then it's a problem. But we liked getting, we liked getting here, yeah. This is just a, a concept of, you know, how can we introduce some of the things we give up if we expanded our staff. So those are two steps in terms of what's next. The third one, we thought we would throw out an idea, establish a downtown refuse zones with strategically-located refuse corrals. So this would be kind of a solution, that's kind of one of the things that we're throwing as the next step. And the, the refuse corrals would be located on city property in the parking lots, so it's in a common space, not necessarily adjacent to or negatively impacting another property owner. The second, they would be designed to handle standard containers or compactors with some flexibility, because things could change, right? So we're saying containers today, 10 years it could be compactors, who knows? So there's some flexibility, we think that needs to be included, and above all, that this enclosure meet your ordinance. Right now, you have a pretty strong ordinance, I think there's some things to kind of amp up a little bit, but like your neighbors that we pointed out, there's some things that I think you can add, not only to take care of collecting it, but to, again, put it out of sight.
Also have proper clearance to safe, to safely remove the trash.
Absolutely.
You know, which, which you have in one location, but maybe not the other current location.
Yes, and then, how, how does this begin to get paid for? So our suggestion is that the initial capital cost, the enclosure, be a city or DDA expense in terms of getting it done, and then, you know, is it gonna be enough? So Mike pointed out five zone potentials. Right now, you have two corrals, maybe a third's needed, but maybe you can just do it with two to start with. And the next part of this, looking ahead, is the, the frequency at which removal would need to be done. So I think it was Northville, they picked up six, no, it was Ferndale, six times a week, which...
Southville, six times.
Six times a week because of need, so even if they provided more corrals, it could be less, but I'm thinking if you had two, maybe three, you could accommodate it within some normal frequency of during the week, and not necessarily have to overload every day. And then all businesses within the refuse zones would be required to apply to DDA and say, "I'm a business, I have refuse, and I want a use permit." Or they could say, "You know what, I'm gonna handle it in a compliant way outside of participating in the corral, or corral, and get a, an opt-out waiver." So everybody's served, but you give some flexibility on how they would be served. And then the DDA would establish how, and at what scale would, like a restaurant, a professional service, or a business pay into this cost of use, in that only the use cost would be something you recoup from the business, it's not the cost of capital improvements to the parking lot or to the corral itself.
Absolutely. Somebody wants to opt-out, there has to be rules, right? Because then we'll have another trash can sitting on Main Street.
So the opt-out rules are, you have to be fully compliant with your ordinance, which would be, on my private property, I have an enclosure that meets all the requirements that your corral is gonna meet, or I don't have trash, I bring it home at the end of the day, whatever the established rules are. And then we've kind of thought through it a little bit, but we didn't do a bulletproof kind of a listing of mechanisms. I'm very confident in city administration and DDA that they could figure out what it is they want in that review of a permit or a review of a opt-out request.
You know, one thing we might want to consider is even an opt-out grace period, because I'm thinking, some of these people may not be able to become compliant, but they're under a contract for another year to have somebody pick up their waste, so they're, you know, we wouldn't want folks to have to get paid double charges, and we would give them an opportunity to phase into what we're looking for here. I don't know if any of the other communities did that, but just one of my thoughts.
It's an awesome point. I mean, and I was thinking you were going another direction, like, "I don't want to do it." And then I realized three months later, "No, I really do want to do it." You, you might have that built into it also.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Ability to change your mind.
Yeah.
Well, that's a great idea, because you don't want to put them in a...
In a tough, double jeopardy, double trash jeopardy.
Double jeopardy, yes.
You made a joke.
Yes, Spencer.
How much are people paying for trash now, just in general?
What do we pay?
I'm sure it's all over the place, but...
Because everybody is so different.
Okay, that's fair.
I'm guessing it's...
I can just speak for where I'm at, 48, I mean, we have a dumpster that Nando has for us, we all have a key, and, yeah, it's just part of our, of doing business with them.
Part of your lease costs.
Yeah. Like along with the assessment of cleaning the streets and stuff. That, that's how it is for us.
I would say our, our firm pays for what they call the business mall office building three times what the city of Northville charged for the same unit. And it's probably because they have one truck coming in servicing a bunch of places and knocking that cost down.
Definitely some economies of scale, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I don't know how specific I was trying to be, but by putting that you're only able to charge back to the business the amount of the service used, it would be real, it wouldn't be like inflated because you're trying to cover other costs, it's just relative to what you pay and, and your direct expenses in doing it, other than the capital cost, but you probably have to do annual contract renewal or something like that, anyway.
Yeah, maybe it's a three-year or so.
Well, we already do it with the city, and I discussed it with you gentlemen, I know. So we, when we started looking at this, we formed a sort of unofficial dumpster committee through the... So, we, when we started looking at this, we formed a sort of unofficial dumpster committee through the DDA.
What was your name?
Trash Talkers. So, um, and, and so that's what we actually looked at was a plan where we could have, we were looking at three areas where people could dump. And then, when I looked at the city's price for dumpsters, because we go out to bid every year and like, like you say, it's a three-year plan. And then, there's so much for each subsequent dump. Like you said, you can dump six days a week if you wanted. And so, Nando was one of the ones that was on the committee and he said that our pricing was substantially cheaper than what he was paying. So, we knew we could get them cheaper. I think the problem came in is we've got to make sure we have something in place, whether it's an ordinance. I know we looked at an assessment district, you know, and people that have, so if you do a, you know, a district, it didn't work really well because people that have space for a dumpster right behind their building, they don't want to have to take their trash a block up the road or whatever. So, your opt-out would work for that portion of it. Then, it's just a matter of can you get enough dumpsters in to where people aren't traveling a great distance with their trash? It's not so bad for a business that's an office, a single office. You got a little bag of trash maybe once a week or something. You know, it's the restaurants that are the ones that have a lot of sloppy, daily nasty trash, you know? And that, that was the biggest challenge, I guess, for that.
One of the restaurants, I'm not going to name which one, told me they don't even have a dumpster, which how can that be? But that's what he told me. I couldn't believe it. It goes somewhere.
Don't we have more than one company right now downtown for the...
Well, yeah, they get whatever they want.
Right.
City, for our city.
Right.
For that, and our pricing was better.
Because I've seen different trucks, so...
Yeah.
Each co-, each business has contracted with individual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're, we get value, right? We have value pricing compared to somebody like, I think Nando had two.
With this plan, you'd have a single waste hauler. You'd bid it all, right? And you only have one company coming here instead of six or whatever.
And another point to, besides economy of that, is that you don't have three haulers saying, that wasn't me, it was him, or it was him, I didn't do that. So, you have some accountability built into that approach, which I think is going to, again, you know, our goal is to enhance the experience of being a business owner, which we bring people to town as business owners. Retail does way more than we do, but we want them also to experience a nice downtown. You know, and, and any little bitty fraction of help, like a single source, is going to improve the situation.
Now, just to say, one other thing is that I represented a community where someone said, hey, we don't want to participate in a single waste hauler for all, all of that. We want to choose our own. They filed a suit, went to the court of appeals on that issue and the community was able to say that there was no added cost, that the cost to the person that was being dragged along was just the cost to, for the service, nothing built in. So, the court has said that, that under those circumstances, the ordinances are valid. So, just to add a third component to this is I think we need to keep track of how we're determining this cost and be able to back it up if somebody complains down the road.
So, the, the first one was, do you, just offhand, remember how much new enclosures were cost? Because it seems like we need a few new enclosures.
I believe the enclosure, and, and we didn't go out to bid, that enclosure, which was two dumpsters and a grease trap or grease bin, excuse me, is about between forty-five and fifty thousand.
Okay.
That's what you guys estimated, is what you're saying?
That, that was the engineer's... That was the engineer's estimate for that enclosure.
How much was our enclosure for, in the new street lot?
I don't remember what the total was, but the price for that one was based off the unit pricing from that.
And then, if, if we could only charge for service only, then would we ever get our money back on those enclosures?
No, I, I don't know if I, I think that you could get it back if you are able to justify the cost built into the service. That is, we couldn't provide the service without this foundation cost that we put in. So, I, I know it may take some further thinking, but my first thought is if, if you could justify it.
Yeah, if I could add my rationale for excluding it was, you know, your new business coming to town is not going to want to pay for a capital improvement on their potential. What if I go out of a business and you're, I'm paying for something I'm not benefiting from? It's, you can split hairs all you want about stuff like that, but that's a choice the cities makes, not me. Just throwing off suggestions.
Sorry, what last thing? The city would manage this or the DDA would manage this? Or it's for us to...
Because that's what the thing is, is, is you've got to have a mechanism that forces people to pay, right? Otherwise, you'd be chasing people all over town for money every month or quarter or whatever. So, the city would have to manage that and it would be done through our DPW.
My thought, and I have no idea how city accounting works, but as we get our water bill, it has five or six different billings on it. I would just say this is another bill on your water bill. So, in some cases, it goes to a building owner, not a tenant, right? So...
It'd go to the owner?
Yeah, building, you know, property owner. That's the way I always think. How do you make it simple so it's not like, oh my gosh, I don't want to do that? But, you know, as we get our monthly water bill, we, you see charges on it and say, okay, we got to pay that. Any property owner probably would do the same.
So, the biggest thing with this idea... I appreciate it, this is very comprehensive. But to set up two or three corrals is going to be costly. So, we're... But the two...
The one isn't the greatest.
Right. I mean, the one in Rosco is a problem, right?
It really should be moved, it's a little rough spot.
Honestly, it's convenient for the businesses because it's close, but it needs to be kind of on the other side of that grassy median facing the other way is what it really needs to be.
When, once you got it, you cleaned it up because it used to be terrible. That couch was in there and everything for years. But, um, it, it, it's like you said, it's all sticking out there and then they overfill them and I, it's always a mess.
Well, the truck can't come in straight. So, they got to put them on an angle. And then, they, we can't even put doors on it because if the doors are left open, it impedes the roadway. So, it's got to be moved.
So, we have to rebuild that one. You'd have to rebuild, so if you have three, did you say three?
Oh, I think that's the only one you, I think that's the only one you have to build is rebuild the one in the Emerald parking lot and then see if that capacity works.
So, like, for example, I just, I do the accounting at the end time. So, uh, we would no longer have that dumpster, which does look ridiculous there. I've always felt that. But, um, we wouldn't have that dumpster there. We would just walk over to the new corral in Rosco.
Yeah, you'd walk another twenty-five feet to the new corral. But the trucks would be able to get in and out safely, not be in that main access drive for the parking lot. And I, I really think it's only that one that you would probably have to do initially. Then, you know, test the frequency of pickup. Maybe you have to pick up twice a week.
So, for you, where would your corral be?
New Street.
New Street.
Oh, there's enough room there for...
Uh, that holds three or is it four?
It holds four. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to make it work in terms of having more, probably more frequent pickup schedule.
They just pick up more often. The, the, the question is, is, or the complaints, you know, are going to be, well, number one, we got to look at the price, right? Because the more people that are in it, the more, I guess, the, the price would get spread out because it's, the initial cost of the dumpster is the most expensive. Subsequent dumps are fairly cheap, right? So, it's how many people are going to opt in or not opt out? And then, the other thing is, you know, is it a deterrent if they got to go too far with their garbage?
So, there's got to be a limit because it's, especially with the restaurants around there, right? I mean, at some point, three or four isn't going to do it. I mean, it's like a three blind mice, for example. They... Well, they have their own now, so they could opt out. But do they have it in, we'd have to, I don't know that we've always enforced the enclosed prettiness of...
On a new business, if a new business comes in, a new build, then under, you know, planned review, they're forced to put in an enclosure. But there's so many that don't have one that to go in and try to retroactively enforce that.
But it, I mean, that's kind of part of all this, right? Is to clean it all up and...
That is certainly what we're suggesting. Here's a turning point for you to, you know, right some wrongs. Is it going to be difficult? Maybe to Mr. Huth's point, you have to give a grace period in which to do that. Maybe it's a change of property ownership or something. But I don't think it's, from a business standpoint, I, I'm a business owner here and I'm thinking, I see a lot of inconsistency and wondering why. And if I'm a new business owner coming to town and I see that inconsistency, that brings a lot of questions to me, to my mind. So, I think the initiation of, hey, we're going to really do something different here for this future view of whatever you want to call it, twenty years out, you, you have to take a bold step like that. That's my opinion.
Seems like if you started the dumpster program, we'll call it, and if you started the dumpster program and one of the ways to opt out is to comply, then that also would give us an opportunity to say, okay, well, we, if you don't want to, if this is too far to haul your garbage, it is incentive to then start complying, right? And build that enclosure, like you're saying, three blind mice or somebody, you know, where maybe they aren't complying currently, but it might give them some incentive. I don't know. But, or maybe it would say, hey, we, yeah, we have to walk a little bit further, but the pricing, you can't beat it and it's going to save us more, so much money in...
And this enclosure behind the antenna art center is a pad on screen. We could easily make this compliant. We just have to cut down that sidewalk or whatever that is and make it ramp up to there. You know, you could fix that.
It just takes money.
You really could.
Yeah, we're going to leave that. But, um, yes, you could and you'd have to put a door on it and, you know, make it look, because I mean, to me, that's the biggest joke. We're, we're thinking of making it a shed.
Well, what's the city's mechanism right now, if there is one, for sign ordinance? I, I see it a lot of communities where signs are all over the place because they've been there for a long time. But there's triggers that says, okay, when you do this, you now have to upgrade your sign to comply. Maybe whatever that mechanism the city currently does for signage, you do for the trash, which has overtime proven throughout many communities to be fair and equitable in terms of, yeah, you have to upgrade, but you have these certain grace periods to doing it.
So, one question I am wondering about is, um, you know, the restaurants have a lot more trash than like the comic book store would have. Are they paying the same amount or is it based on...
Didn't seem like it, right? And you're...
No, it's five times as much.
The example is much different. Yeah, they pay a lot more, like, for your five hundred dollars every other month for a restaurant.
So, it's different.
Yeah, it scales down to an office paying very, very little.
So, like five hundred dollars compared to one sixty-three, I mean, that's pretty different.
And that's their formula, so yours will be different, I assume. But, you know, it's just an example.
But it does make sense that restaurants pay more. They have more trash, they have the grease things.
For sure, for sure. Well, thank you. This was very well done. Thank you. I appreciate all the information, lot to mull over and have Greg make happen. Sorry.
Well, I mean, it really, honestly, it starts with here because what we knew is we need a mechanism to force people to pay, right? And, and some people are not going to be happy. And if they have to walk further than they've had to walk possibly, they're not going to be happy and those complaints are going to come into you. So, this is something that you have to decide what you want to take on with this, you know?
You know, the walking distance thing's always an issue and planning tools. A mall is a good example. You don't want to park a car more than three hundred feet from the door to a mall. That's, you know, just principles of planning. And we kind of looked at that approach to this and we did a A, B and a C. So, lot B, which is Market Street Lot, would have had a dumpster in it and covered from CAS to whatever that ring road is where the, on the north side of the restaurant that's currently not functioning. So, we would have had about three hundred feet to all businesses in those three lots.
If we did market?
Yeah, if you did market. So, we were looking at it from a, how do you rationalize this kind of thing? That was, we didn't show you that, but we studied that to make sure we were in some kind of a boundary of planning principles.
I was thinking Rosco, you could also do two and so people didn't have to... Of course, there's so many details. When you were talking to the businesses, what were their, what were their comments and what were their thoughts?
Some of the, some of the private offices or professional offices, like, they have no access and we need access, you know? Like, like, we just throw it out there, but we'd rather have a place, you know? The, the restaurants, you know, I already got one, I already got a spot, you know, where they always use it. So, we're, we're all good. We don't need anything different, you know? Because they have their, they're comfortable. But the reality is, yeah, you, you need it and it can still be the same in the same location. Maybe it's more frequent, but...
And some people were comfortable at the inconvenience of others, like putting it on the street, which, yeah, it works for me, but everybody passing by has to deal with it. It's not too nice. When we first moved to town, we had a dumpster for daily trash, but we did recycle just as a matter of how we wanted to deal with trash. And we had to go across southbound over to a church parking lot to do it. We didn't do it every day, but we did it. And it wasn't that bad of a deal, honestly, but...
At the end time, we take it home, the recycling.
Yeah.
Something that we can also look at to help mitigate the impact of distance is, is some kind of hand carts. That I don't know exactly the mechanism for managing that and I can see them disappearing periodically. But I could also see them being something where we can use that as a way to help make sure that people can get the stuff to the dumpster without having to fight with it as much.
They have that a place to keep the hand cart when they're building, right?
Well, that's the thing. Maybe we keep the hand cart at the dumpster. If somebody needs it, they take it, get it, bring it back, dump it. If they've got heavy stuff, they need to move to the dumpster.
On, on that note, Eric, I saw a lot of that happening on Cherry Street where they had five or six dumpsters. People would be trucking in trash and ask, where are you coming from? Just to get an idea where they come from. So, they, you know, they're smart and I'm not going to carry trash when I can wheel it. So, they did it yourself. And I think Plymouth example is that they gave them carts to get to the container. So, there's a little precedence for that approach, which makes some sense. It makes it uniform, too. And maybe the trash hauler provides those containers.
We'll do like Aldi. You got to put a quarter in.
I mean, maybe.
It's a quarterback.
Get the quarterback. Yeah, get the quarterback, so.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions or suggestions like all these?
So, this takes, it's going to take a while, right? I mean, we're looking to do something...
I think this is...
In the meantime, you got to have a place to put your trash or they, whoever we were dealing with.
Well, the, the only, out of the three cans that were there, the only, the one can that he has a parking lot and the other two, we told them, you got to find a place for them. You can't put them on the sidewalk. So, and I believe, you know, we had to even track down who owned them. One of them has a parking lot. I don't know if they're going to choose to keep it there or not. And I think the other one ended up in that private lot that you showed, that yellow one. I think that's, that's where that one ended up. Because I don't think that one was there, right? That's, that just kind of showed up there. I don't remember it being there, so...
I remember that one being there a while ago, but I don't remember when that one showed up.
I think it was there and I think it ended up on the sidewalk and now it's back, so...
We, um, just to kind of close, and I mean, my thoughts is that the consistency in enforcing the ordinance, whatever it ends up being, is important to a business owner, that there's rules that you can count on being followed and that's what needs to happen. We're trying to give a, an idea of a mechanism that cannot just be rule oriented, but solution oriented on how do you enhance the downtown? That's kind of what we're thinking. How do we make it better? And it's not a new idea. We've been thinking about this for twenty years, honestly. And coming to town, we moved here thinking, where do we go? Because we could have moved anywhere when we started our business. Where do we go that we can become part of the community and make a difference? And Mount Clemens was an opportunity for us to be part of something. And so, we initially started thinking about things like that and you may remember, I don't know, fifteen years ago, we introduced the idea of let's use city parking lots for county parking employees. So, they'd park on the outlets and flood through the city to get to their workplace. So, we're thinking about stuff like that, not because it just benefits us. We're thinking about it broader in terms of what will it do for the place we chose to live in, in terms of business owner. So, hopefully, the decision that is going to be made is done with some very thoughtful, forth, you know, forward thinking, not just as a problem today that we have to fix, but we're, we're looking for, you know, long game and, you know, solution here.
And David, you brought up the county parking structure and we we changed the direction that the county was taking. I don't know if you all realize that, but they were going to rebuild that parking deck where it used to be.
The garage.
Okay, we we changed their thinking, their methodology because we we live here, we're part of the community. We tried to to get them to to not build any parking lot, any parking deck, which they they met us halfway because they built less than they had before. And most people are working from home or whatever, hybrid, I guess, how that works. But our hope was to have them rent space from the city because all these lots are empty, you know, during the week. That didn't work out, but we preserved that parcel of land for a really cool park that we designed. You all know that. And hopefully it'll happen at some point, who knows?
We hope so.
I I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but can, you know, I'm sure Brian and Laura could take this, but if you guys come into the next DDA meeting and present that, because I think we need input from that would be, you know, especially helpful here.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Which one is it? Wednesday? Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know if you can make it Wednesday at three, but that's the next one, if not December.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday at three, if not, I mean. Yeah, yeah. We can amend the agenda, so. Okay, awesome. Does anybody have any city discussion of city business? We'll move to nine B. Thanks, guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was great. Nine B? Anybody got anything? Anybody have any commissioner comments? We don't have a whole lot of time, so, but all right. Well, then we will go ahead and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Move to adjourn the work session?
Anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, work session adjourned. We'll see everybody at seven.